Good evening, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. I'd like to call it order the City of West Bend Licensing Board for December 20th. Note that we do have a quorum and we have a whopping two items on our agenda. First being approval of minutes, the Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes for December 6th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second, any comments or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Then under agenda items for consideration, number two, Class B Beer, Class C Wine License for Nash Nook LLC, Nash Nook of 1179 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second, any comments or questions on this? Hearing none, all those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And having known for the business for Licensing Board, I adjourn by the call of the Chair. And with that, I'd like to call it order the City of West Bend Common Council Meeting for December 20th. Note that we do have a quorum. With everybody here to counter for, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. We'll begin with approval of the minutes, the Common Council Regular Meeting Minutes for December 6th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Model Ann Allen, any comments or question, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we're going a little out of order today because we do have a number of presentations for recognitions and resolutions. The first being recognition of our Police Chief, Ken Moiler. And I would like to read this official commendation we have for him. This is effective Monday, December 20th, 2021. "It is my pleasure to commend Police Chief Ken Moiler on behalf of the City of West Bend Common Council and all citizens of West Bend. And whereas Chief Moiler has faithfully and selflessly served the citizens of West Bend for 19 years, he has tirelessly worked to provide a safe and secure community while increasing professionalism and presence. And whereas Chief Moiler is a visible, active participant in our community, serving on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club, Columns, and Family Promise, he is also a member of the Kiwanis Club. And whereas Chief Moiler supported the Washington County Chiefs, Wisconsin Police Executives, and FBI National Academy Associates. And whereas Chief Moiler originated the West Bend Citizens Academy to provide an in-depth, experiential opportunity of a behind-the-scenes view of the Police Department. And whereas Chief Moiler previously served the City of Milwaukee Police Department for 28 years. And whereas the City of West Bend thanks Chief Moiler, congratulates him on his forthcoming retirement, and wishes his wife Sue and him many happy productive retirement years." Now therefore I, Kristoffy Jenkins, do hereby issue an official City of West Bend commendation for our wonderful Police Chief, Ken Moiler, to thank him for his 19 years of dedicated service. Please join me with a round of applause. Chief, do you have any final words? We'll let you come on up. I ask for trouble, I know.
Actually, these won't be my final words because I have some items on the agenda and I'm working for another three weeks. Just very short, thank you and thank you to a community, a business community, and a community that has been very, very supportive of me and my tenure, but more importantly of the Police Department and of the city, or of the officers that are on the streets. So, thank you to all those people. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And with that, we'll kick off some resolutions for milestones that we have. I will start with number three, a resolution honoring Fire Battalion Chief Jeffrey Gustafson for 25 years of service, and I'll be looking for a motion on this one.
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you. It's been motion second, all those in favor of the resolution, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. How do you want to do this? You want me to read the resolutions first? Okay.
Sure, that way I don't repeat what you say.
Sounds good. Well, this resolution so reads, "Whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas Jeffrey Gustafson has been a great asset to the Fire Department throughout his 25-year career with the City of West Bend, Jeffrey was hired as a full-time employee on November 18th, 1996. His experience grew in the department, leading him to various roles. Jeffrey was promoted to motor pump operator in 1999, lieutenant in 2000, and battalion chief in 2016. Whereas during his career as a firefighter, Jeffrey Gustafson continued to further his education. In 2003, Jeffrey completed his Bachelor of Science degree in fire science. His ongoing education efforts were just a part of what helped Jeffrey grow. Whereas Jeffrey Gustafson also received American Legion EMT of the Year in 2013. Therefore be it resolved that the City of West Bend honors Battalion Chief Jeffrey Gustafson and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service." Let's give him a round of applause for that.
Just a quick couple of words on Jeff. Jeff's been instrumental in our department. One of his main assets to our department is his grant-writing skills. Over the years, I've come to this council many times to get grants approved, and Jeff is responsible for the one, or one of the guys is responsible for writing those grants. So he's saved taxpayers thousands and thousands of dollars by his quality grant writing. He's also in charge of buildings and equipment, and as you can tell, the equipment that we have in our department is probably second to none. And the buildings, you saw the study, we're working on those. But he's been an instrument, a huge instrument to our department, and we really appreciate all his hard work. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. And next up, we have number four, a resolution honoring Fire Lieutenant Richard Lasecki for 25 years of service. If I could have a motion on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion seconded, all those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. And we'll read this one. This goes, "Whereas firefighters protect our lives, our families, and the economic life of our community from the threat of fire and hazards, they risk their lives to preserve the lives of others and to protect our property and resources from destruction. And whereas Richard Lasecki began his service with the West Bend Fire Department in November 1996 as a firefighter. In December 2000, he became an MPO, was then promoted to a lieutenant in January 2002, and is a member of the International Association of Firefighters. Whereas, Richard Lasecki is known to be dedicated to the service of providing high-quality EMS care and continued leadership on the fire ground, and has been a member of the dive team since its inception in 2004. Therefore be it resolved that the City of West Bend honors Fire Lieutenant Richard Lasecki and expresses deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal and dedicated service."
Just a couple of words on Rick. Rick is probably one of the hardest-working lieutenants that we have. You can tell by his build, when you get him to a fire scene, this is the guy you want on the end of the hose line pulling the hose, or pulling people out, or ventilating, those kind of things. So, Rick also announced that he is retiring at the end of the year, which wasn't on the resolution, but I want to just thank Rick for all his 25 years of dedication, and when he leaves this department and his head held high, and knowing that he's served the citizens of West Bend and our department at extremely high levels. So, thank you, Rick.
Next up, we have a resolution honoring Police Officer Kent Vole for 25 years of service. If we could have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion seconded, and, I'm sorry, all those in favor, settle by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this resolution so reads, "Whereas Officer Kent Vole began his career with the City of West Bend Police Department on October 6th, 1996 as a police officer. And whereas during his career with the Police Department, Officer Vole has received awards for going above and beyond, one of which was the Meritorious Service Award in 2006 for his investigation and arrest of four actors for 17 counts of forgery. Another was the Life Saving Award in 2019 for performing CPR and saving the life of a juvenile female that suffered sudden cardiac arrest. And whereas Officer Vole is an original member and leader of the West Bend Police Department honor guard since April 2009, and of the department's drone team formed in January 2021. And whereas Officer Vole has presented at every Citizens Academy since 2006, and whereas Officer Vole has been a bike patrol officer for the majority of his career, and has been instrumental in maintaining the Police Department's bicycles and related equipment for several years. And whereas Officer Vole is deeply involved in the community, serving many hours of community service with Big Brothers Big Sisters, Boys and Girls Club, and Friends, Inc., the West Bend Police Department, City of West Bend, and its citizens have been well-served by his 25 years of service. And therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of West Bend, Washington County, Wisconsin honors Officer Kent Vole and expresses its deep appreciation for his 25 years of loyal, dedicated service."
(inaudible) 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 And with all those presentations, I would like to recess the Common Council Meeting to Public Works.
Okay, I would like to call the order the Board of Public Works. We have five items on the agenda. First item, approval of minutes from December 6th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions or deletions or additions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried. Thank you. Item number two, Transportation Network Sustainability Plan. Planning tool, presentation by Washington County. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. You may remember that throughout this year, 2021, I came to you several times and we talked about this work that the county is doing for the City of West Bend and the Village of Kewaskom. There was an agreement signed last year among the, between the three communities, the county, the village, and the city, and since that agreement was passed, city staff and county staff have worked together towards the creation of a Transportation Network Sustainability Plan for the City of West Bend. The county has developed a computer application that will allow us to inventory all the roads in the city, and help develop a timeline for maintenance, summarize best practices for those repair and maintenance items, calculate recommended average annual funding necessary, and help develop analysis and scenarios throughout the use of this tool in the future. So I have tonight with us two county staff, Scott and Mike, who will show you what the tool they have developed, what it can do, and help me answer questions on all this. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. I am Scott Schmidt, Washington County's Director of Public Works. With me tonight is Mike Vanderson, he's with our GIS department. He and Dave Zarther with our IT department worked on this application. That Mike will go through you briefly. Obviously, the application is more dealt for staff, and they'll go through that stuff. So they'll ask you some policy questions in the next couple of months as far as funding and spending and items like that, years that the road should be in service, sewer water utilities, stuff like that as we kind of go forward. So, thank you for having us here tonight. We wish Mr. Mayor to let us speak in front of you for this plan. The plan was initially started out as for roadways, and when we got into doing it with the City of West Bend and Village Kewaskom, we quickly realized that the underlying utilities are just as important. A lot of times when utilities are poor underneath the roadway, that it's also time to actually do the roadway at that time. So we actually spent some time with your staff here and the staff at the Village of Kewaskom to pull in the utility data too, so sewer water utility data into the tool as well, to see what that would look like too, because it doesn't pay to pave a road in two years and three years later redo the sewer and water in the roadway. That puts eggs on everybody's face. So we wanted to look at that kind of as a holistic approach to the roads in the City of West Bend to incorporate that sewer and water utility. So with that, I did provide a handout. This is a draft version, and please understand, this is a really rough draft. We'll get to, we have four maps that are in there already. You'll see there's placeholders for other maps, wording for other maps that are coming down the way as we work through this with your, with your staff, as well as the Village of Kewaskom staff. So as we kind of look through this, I'll just kind of give you a kind of a high-level look. So we did the street inventory using your street data that the Wisconsin DOT has through their Wizzler application. So you'll see all the roadways when we get to the maps. On page two, you see your pacer ratings. What that is, is by the state of Wisconsin, we're required every odd year to go out there and rate our roadways and provide that data to the state of Wisconsin. So we're pulling that data live that the city undertook. And again, a 10 being an excellent, your road is basically brand-new and paved, down to 1 where basically it's basically potholes and patches and stuff like that, almost back to a gravel type of condition. So you'll see on about the bottom of page two, what the City of West Bend roads are looking like right now as far as ratings are concerned, and then a mileage, which in each of those rating groups. And later on, you'll see there's a map associated with it as well, so you can see where those pazers are. So, and that, what that does with our tool going, well, you don't want to repave a road that's a 9, right? Because it just was recently paved. So we're looking at those 1, 2s, and 3s of the roadways that need to be repaved or have some kind of remedial action taking place on it. As I scroll down here to the next, is that most active? Great. So you see on the next page, a little graphical representation of, and every blue dot represents a segment of the roadway. Its age on the bottom of the graph, as well as the pacer reading on the left. So you can see that you have some roads that are, again, if your data is accurate, I know the, the city has spent a lot of time and effort recently to make sure that data is as accurate as possible, and I commend your staff for doing that over the last several years, Max and Emily. And so you look at that going, yeah, you have some pavement that's pretty old in the city, 50, 60, 70 years old, between, between pavements, resurfacing projects. So we looked at your roadways here going, well, easily yours, you can see a lot of your roadways will last that 50 years if you're doing the right type of maintenance on there. A county highway, we generally speak about 25 to 30 years. We have a lot more traffic, heavier traffic on our roadways. A lot of your roadways are residential, have maybe a garbage truck going through, a bus, stuff like that, but don't take the heavy pounding of agriculture equipment and heavy truck traffic that you'll see a lot of the county roads take on that. So we look at the pacer ratings, we look at traffic volumes on the roadways, also using the City of West Bend staff's knowledge, look at where is your traffic volume going to be in the future as well? Because you're looking at the roads you want to re-plant and replace, well, if you have a road that only has 100 cars a day versus a road that has 1,000 cars a day, well, my guess is you'll probably want to do the one that has 1,000 cars a day, everything else being relatively equal. So we took a look at the traffic volumes as well going forward. The next thing, as I mentioned earlier, we looked at utility age underneath the roadways, and hopefully you won't be shocked by the screen that we bring up there with the map of what the utility ages are in the city, but quite a few utilities are of substantial age within the City of West Bend, especially in what I'll call city proper, right, in kind of, I'll call it the downtown-ish area, area that, that the utilities there are relatively, you know, older, and if you're on the Public Works committee, you probably understand that too. And we also looked at sanitary, sanitary maps. So you'll see we'll have information, what we want to do yet is we have to work with your sewer and water utilities. It's one thing to say, well, it's old, you got to replace it, but there might be stuff that's maybe not as old that going, but we keep having breaks here. Maybe it wasn't installed correctly, maybe it was too shallow, something like that. So we got to work with your staff yet to kind of recognize and report out those areas that might need that attention first versus just based on solely age. So that's where your kind of institutional knowledge of your staff will come into, come into play there. Again, no, no buoyance of failure. And then, of course, any future development, if you have no capacity issues going out there. If you know you're going to be expanding one direction, knowing, all right, well, that we got to re-balance that sewer, we have interceptor, something like that too. So all that kind of stuff that we're trying to bring into this plan. Again, we start off with just roadways, we can see we kind of bring everything back in together as we look at that. Mike and Dave did a great job of doing this GIS analysis, and we'll show that up on the screen in a few, few minutes. And again, we have what's your typical pavement lifecycle going through there. We look at yours specifically in the City of West Bend and how long your pavement has been lasting based on your maintenance that you've been doing. We're also looking for any planned road improvements as well, that if you know of an area that's going to be extension, I know there was one talk about, is it Trenton Road being expanded potentially with the bridge going over the river, stuff like that. So of roads that you know might be coming in the future, or any expansions of roadways. 18th, for example, you're just redoing it, or any roads that you think you might have to expand for capacity to widen. Main Street years ago was two lanes at one point, right? You expand it to four lanes with the twiddle lane. If there's any roadways of that that the staff knows about, we want to take that into account too. You don't want to redo that road three years from now and six years from now going, yeah, we have a capacity issue, right? So that's the kind of stuff we're working with your staff on kind of going forward. So with that, at the end here, you'll see there's a map of the city, and I apologize, it's rotated 90 degrees on there to fit it better onto the page. So you see the map of basically the City of West Bend. The second map, I believe, is the pacer ratings. It's hard for me to get into there and read that. I believe that was the pacer ratings. Yes. So you see that the red that you see on there are the pacer ratings that are 1 to 3. So those are the roads that need to be resurfaced somehow, either the asphalt removed and repaved or a mill and overlay if they're still good enough. So if you look at that map, I know it's difficult to see without zooming in too far, but you see quite a bit of that downtown proper, the red lines, and the next group is the yellow is your pacer ratings, 4 to 6, and again, the newer ones being green, green for good, red for bad, is kind of how we look at it, kind of like, almost like the traffic signals. The next map, and we're going to have a lot more maps going forward and to provide to you. The next map is those traffic volumes that we talked about earlier, which roads have higher traffic volumes, which ones have less. Again, trying to focus more on the ones that have the higher volume roadways. A lot of those traffic volumes are done by the state of Wisconsin or city staff that we have in there. And as you see, not a lot of the roads are, not every road is done, if they're local roads, not need to be done. And the last map is the utility age map. And this is the one that, and I can certainly rotate this 90 degrees or certainly give it a shot anyway. Right-click? Right-click? Whoop. I'm making everybody dizzy. So you'll see in this instance too, where the red are utilities that are aged of 71 to 110 years, again nearing their end of use of life potentially. Yeah, not a guarantee, that's where we're also using the city staff to figure out what kind of pipe that was, right? Was it concrete, was it ductile iron, all that stuff, because they have different ages and using your staff to figure out exactly what you're looking at. So just because it's 70 years old doesn't mean it's bad, it doesn't need to be replaced. But that's one thing you want to make sure we're looking at going, all right, it's 70 years old, when you vis you sewer it, you know, taking a snapshot of, you know, videoing it, is it good, is it good in condition, same for the water main, stuff like that, or any issues? So, so again, a lot of infrastructure, again, as I had mentioned, kind of that downtown proper, as you can imagine, makes sense, right? The oldest part of the city has the oldest infrastructure within that city limits. So again, that's sewer and water, again, zero to 30 years, 31 to 50, 51 to 70. And then again, that's 71 to 100. So just kind of give you a kind of a feel for how much of that, the age that utilities are doing there. And I'm sure if you've been around here, and I think most of you have been for quite some time, know a lot of times you use street work, you're doing utility work at the same time, especially around that centralized area of the city. So, so with that, we are working with the staff as finalizing this document as we move forward. But right now, I'd like to turn over to Mike Vander Sanden. Did your, there you go. He's going to run quickly through the application that we developed. We developed this in-house. One of the great things about doing that is that we can modify it. And we've been making a lot of modifications, and Max can, can say that, Doug is out in the audience too, that, you know, we come up with something, we look at that and going, oh, yeah, let's add that, can we make that change to that? And by doing this application in-house and making this available to city staff and us providing that support going out into the future, I think will, will make us a great partnership going forward. This is not an application we just hand over to the city and going, good luck, have fun with it. We'll be there, obviously, working with other communities as well going forward, there are cities, villages, and towns in the, in the county as well. So we'll be making sure we're maintaining this. And, you know, if we do the city of Hartford next year, they might come up with something too that might help the city of West Bend put in that application. So I understand it's not a, it's not completed, but if you have comments on that too, we'd be happy to take those. Again, working with city staff, so far we've only gone through two, so there's probably other good ideas out there hopefully as well.
All right, so what you're looking at right now is the budgeting tool. This is one of three components of the application. There's a budgeting tool, and then a separate dashboard application, and then a map editing tool where, where you can tweak the plan, but I'll get into that in a minute. So let's start with the budgeting tool, and I'm going to focus your attention on this center segment, the Pacer summary. Right now, it's, it's, the application is reset, so there's, there's nothing scheduled in the plan. But if you look at the not scheduled, you'll see what segments are in what Pacer ratings for a total of the 140.6 miles that are into the, in the city of West Bend's road jurisdiction. And you could see the breakdown, right? The Pacer segment of one, you only have one of those segments, a .1 mile, so that's good news. But as you go down further on down the list, you have a number of Pacer twos, threes, and so on and so forth. So next, I want to show you the costs. So how, how is the application developing the estimate? If we look at the city of West Bend cost, this is where we set those costs and how the estimates are produced and the assumptions that we're making. Right now, working with cities, working with Max and city staff, we came up with estimates of $600 for per foot lane mile, or per foot mileage of, excuse me, per foot segment of the asphalt. So, and that, that $600 not only includes the surfacing, but it also includes the engineering work as well as the curb and gutter costs. Concrete, $700, reconstructing an alley, $400, and then $200 each for water and sewer work. I don't know if you, yeah, you can see it, the highlighted fields that you see here, these are, are calculated fields where if you're doing the utility work underneath the underlying road surface, we're, we're basically sharing the cost of the asphalt, of the surfacing work to those, those utilities. And the way that it's been explained to us is that one-third of the cost would be in the pool of asphalt money. So that, when you look at the asphalt for utilities cost, that now goes, let me recalculate it, based on 66.66%, so we're going to shift two-thirds, right? So now the asphalt for utilities goes and takes on one-third of that cost. The sewer with asphalt takes on a third of that cost, so it's $200 for the sewer work, and then an extra $200 for the asphalt above. And the same with the water. And then you look at the concrete costs, they're just a little bit higher because of the additional $100 per, per foot. So let's go back now.
Does that make sense, that when you're doing a sewer project and a water project, you're paying for part of the roadway up above that? That's basically what it is? Or they're just doing the asphalt only on road if the utilities are good?
Is that, I'm sorry, can I ask a quick question? Is that, is that based on, sorry, is that, is that based on the estimates that you're getting, Max?
Yes, so those estimates were based on a history of the contracts that we have over the past several years. So we figured out over those, those construction contracts that we had over six years, I believe it was, what portion we paid for sanitary sewer and then the footage, and then we get a price per foot. Same thing for the water, and then same thing for the, the road itself. So we use historical data of contracts that we have actually constructed.
Okay, and you can make minor adjustments in the program based on what you think the current market might be?
Yes, and each municipality can do their own. So if Kewasken is seeing different numbers versus West Bend, maybe they have a smaller project size, maybe you have double or triple the size projects, so maybe you're getting a better price per foot. So Kewasken can change your numbers, and Hartford can change theirs, right? So this all, you know, they can go in there and change theirs, they can accept whatever they put in. But yes, we are working with you guys. You guys tell us what the numbers are, because we don't do a lot of sewer and water work at the county, thankfully.
Sorry.
Sure. And then just at the bottom here, you'll see a setting for utility age threshold. Right now, it's set for 60 years. And what that means is when it evaluates each road segment in the program, it decides if, it sees the attribute for that road segment and says if, if the road's going to be reconstructed and the utilities are 60 years or over, automatically those utilities are going to be part of the work. So it's going to become a project of, of surfacing with utilities. If the utilities are under that 60-year threshold, 50 years or under, it'll just be a surfacing project.
And that can be changed too.
And that can be changed too, exactly, absolutely, if, if that threshold needs to be set at a different level. And then right below that, we, we do factor in inflation. So as inflation goes up and down, you can increase and decrease that number to get a more accurate estimate. And then we'll set that to 2022 for the start of the inflation on the estimate. So just moving back to the budget. So based on the, the estimated surfacing and utility budget that the, the city of West Bend currently allocates, the numbers that we got from Max, I'm going to put in a $2 million road surfacing amount, with a, with a million dollars coming from each of the water and the sewer utilities. This carry forward remaining button basically says if there's money left over to be spent from the year prior's project, it's going to use the leftover funds, move it to the next year, and have that money available for future projects. That can be unchecked if you don't want that setting. Moving down to applying inflation, for this first cost projection, I'm going to set this to cost only. Basically, that's only going to apply inflation to costs, and you'll see the effect of that after I run the projection. Again, here's that utility age threshold. This alleys per year, basically, this looks at the number of alleys that exist within the municipality, I believe, for the city of West Bend, that number is 57, and then divides it by the 30 years of the plan and puts in the average. In this case, it, it just averages out to two. I'm, I'm just going to set that down to one for, for the purposes of the demonstration. Here's the, the range of the years of the plan, so we're going to set this to a 30-year plan from '22 to '52. And finally, this Pacer range can be set if you want to just look at specific Pacer range, Pacer ranges, but for the purposes of the demonstration, we'll keep this from one to 10. If I hit next, this is going to go to a secondary page where I can, I can allocate a different fund amount for any year of the plan. So if there's grant funds available, or if the city decides they want to throw additional dollars at road surfacing for that year, we can, we can alter those numbers for any particular year for any of those, those three budgets, as well as change the, the number of alleys that are being conducted for that year. So now when I hit allocate funds, basically what's happening is the program is running through the 140.6 lane miles of city of West Bend. It's looking at the Pacer rating, it's prioritizing Pacer ratings that are low, and it's also then prioritizing segments that have a high average daily traffic. So it's going to put those streets that get used the most to the highest. And if you look at the summary now, you see that we do have some road scheduled, right? So our, our Pacer one, well, let's go down here. So of your 140.6 lane miles, at the current budgeted amount of $2 million a year and two, a million dollars in water and sewer, over the course of the 30-year plan, it estimates that you'll get done about 17.9 lane miles, or, you know, somewhere's around 8% of, of the city's total roads. It's, it's completing your, your one Pacer one segment, all of your Pacer two segments, and it's getting about two-thirds of the way through your Pacer threes. The reason why it didn't finish all your Pacer threes until it went into the fours was because of the alleys. So if I click on this, these Pacer fours, these are, these are all those alleys that, that we, we forced into the program. Obviously, we can get rid of those, but I'm just, just explaining as to what you're seeing there, but.
Mike, can I just ask you a question quick?
Yes, absolutely.
So the, the 2 million, is it saying that it's 2 million over a period of 30 years? Are you saying 2 million per year for 30 years?
$2 million per year. Yep, absolutely, absolutely. So real quickly, I'm just going to go and launch this, the dashboard application, this is the second of those three applications I was talking about, and refresh that. And so all of the data is linked from the budget application to this application to the next application I'll show in a minute. But you can now see, and I'll expand this here, you know, here's the $4 million that you're, you're spending pretty evenly every year. It goes up and down a little bit with that carryover funds. But you can see the, the orange color on the bottom, that's what you're spending on asphalt surfacing. You can see some small areas of gray, those are concrete projects. The purple are alleys. And then above that, in the aqua color, is the money that's coming from the water utilities, and then the yellow on top is the sewer. So if I go next to the, to this lane mile, lane miles per year graph, this is where, when I set budget, the, the inflation rate to be only at costs, this is the, the result of that, right? So starting in the plan, when, when inflation doesn't hit you so much, you're getting done almost a mile in lane reconstruction. But as the course of the 30 years goes on, by the time 30 years is over, you're only getting under half of that because inflation is eating away a lot of that $2 million. I'll just point out a few other things. Here's the total filtered cost, the $123 million is the total cost of the, of the plan for the 30 years. Again, you can see that 17.9 of the 140.6 total, the area in black is, is getting completed by reconstruction. There's also another chart here where it's looking at utilities. So under this current scenario, you still have 123.1 miles of utilities that are over 60 years old that are not in the current plan, so a little under 20 miles that are, that are being repaired. And then there's a few other graphs that are kind of tough to see, but in addition to what I've showed you, the, the dashboard is interactive, so if you wanted to drill down by year, I can click on 2022. It shows, shows you on the bottom here what projects are slated for 2022 by individual street name. And you can click on one of those just to get what the individual project costs. So I clicked on this, this segment of Green Tree, that particular project is costing $1.9 million. So that's how the dashboard works. It basically gives you a better visual representation of what the budgeting tool is, is calculating for you. So just real quick, I wanted to go back to the budget tool. And Max had asked me what, what would, what would it cost for the city to, to put all 140.6 miles in the 30-year plan? And after some trial and error, basically what that works out to is $12 million a year in surfacing, $6 million, $6 million in, in water utilities, and another $6 million in sewer. So if I rerun this, rerun this cost estimate, allocate funds. Now you're going to see that, what did I do wrong? Oh, yeah. This is, one, two, three, okay. There we go. So now you can see the, the entire 140.6 miles are scheduled. If I go back to the dashboard, just refresh that. The total cost of this projection is $906 million over the cost of the 30 years. But you're going to see, as, as, as expected, costs go up slightly over the course of the plan with inflation factored in. But you can, you can also see that if I go, whoops, on this, back to the utilities, you're getting all 140.6 miles completed, and there's just some, some anomalies in the data, this, this, all, all 140.6 miles of, of utilities are finished as well. And then real quick, the third piece of this application is the mapping tool. So obviously, the, the city's not going to be spending $24 million a year, I'm guessing, but somewhere's there's a, there is a, a happy medium between maybe what, what's being currently allocated and, and that to determine where the highest priorities are. Once you, you make that, you know, that, you find that sweet spot in the budgeting tool, this application's really going to help you fine tune and, and kind of hone in what that plan should look like. Let me just start in the map layers quick. These are some additional tools that, that can help you as reference layers. This was the map that Scott was referencing, where the red is the utility data, the utility lines that are over 60 years old, not, you know, most of the red being in the center, central city and, and up in the old village of Barton. And then you can also drill down into your individual Pacer ratings and look at what are in two, what are in three, so on and so forth, with the green being utility data's under, under that 60 threshold and the red being over, so on and so forth. Here's that average daily traffic map that we were looking at. You've got your sanitary, sanitary sewer lines that you can reference, as well as your water network. And then there's one more thematic here that, that kind of puts some of this together with Pacer data and utility age all together in one theme, where the darker, the thicker the red, the higher the priority, the lighter, the greener color, the, the lower the priority. And then getting back to the plan, one.
We're in the $2 million plan?
We're in the, the all of it, yeah. And there's a couple other, you know, quick tools that I can show that, that give you the ability to, you know, create some, some plan maps. You can filter down to what years of the, of the plan that you're interested in looking at. And then finally, I just wanted to show, so obviously, the budgeting tool makes some, some raw assumptions sometimes, right? And so here's a, here's an example where Acadia Avenue is slated to be done in 2041 for all segments, but for some reason, there was a segment up here that decided it couldn't get done in 2041, but scheduled it for 2042. What we can do is reallocate that project back to 2041 through this. And then there's another option to lock it. So I'll say yes. And once that's saved, and this, and it works in the budgeting tool as well, you can see now that segment of Acadia is now locked. And how this is powerful is that, say you, you develop your five-year plan, these, these are the, the priority roads for five years. You can lock that, that, those roads in the five-year plan and then continue to run the projections for years six through, through, through 30. And, and the ones that are locked will not be affected. They'll, they'll stay in place and not get recalculated. So it's a nice ability to continue to run projections while, while locking down certain segments that are, that are kind of, you know, more or less set in stone, so. Unless you have any questions, that's pretty much the, the application.
If I, if I could just add just quickly, there is still a human factor to this, right? You have the GNS panel screen which shows the roadway, which Mike just showed you that, you know, that the segments that the city came up with for the roadways, they're still going to look at it from, from a human standpoint too, again, sewer, water, your staff looking at this. It's a, it's a great tool, initial tool to say, okay, where, where are we, which road should we be doing? But there's also that, like I said, the human aspect of it as well, that Max and other staff here will have to look at to kind of codify that. And the maps you'll see produced will probably do a five-year window map showing these roads and these utilities in these five years, and then these five years, because if we show a map and saying, well, my road's going to be done in 2021, well, it gets close, or excuse me, not 21 anymore, 2025, but you get there and another road maybe here it's worse, or utilities happen somewhere else. So we would like to show those, those maps in a five-year block, and then you do that five-year plan to kind of hone in on which projects you're actually going to do, because you might have constituents said, my, the plan says we're going to have it in 2025. You're like, yeah, but this road got worse, or the utilities over here got worse or something like that, we move that one up and push yours back. So that's what we kind of like to do, a five-year block window. You'll have all this data behind the scenes, staff will have access to it. We typically like to do that, that five-year window map because we do know things will change. And we're projecting out, you know, 20, 30 years, you know, it's just, one road could go up and down slightly, so. So just understand that too. You see that, you'll see kind of a five-year block window, but if you want to know exactly when, your staff will have access to the app behind the scenes.
All right, I'm going to nail them.
Yeah, I, we were looking at a 30-year window for planning. As, as that progresses, 30 years into that plan, stuff that was just 30 years old, not on the more than 60 is now 60 or more years old. I mean, does this take that into account? In other words, do you recalculate each of the years as you progress?
Yes, so for instance, if a utility is 60 years old, we'll know in, in 2031, right, it's now 70 years old. So there is that math behind the scenes to kind of keep that age of utility and payment going forward. And that's why every two years, we reload their Pacer ratings in the city. That's one thing that's nice about this is if you get that information, the city gives it to the state in a certain format, we get it right back, it just magically appears in that program, and then we can really reuse that, that's where we can reallocate the funds, again, going, well, that road stayed pretty good, this four now became a two all of a sudden, right, for some reason. And then you can reshuffle the deck, if you will, and lock certain roads. So without a doubt, that there's that, that methodology behind the scene to make sure you're getting, you know, that, that data. And that's supposed to go to work with staff going, well, 60 years might be the goal, but that might not be reality, right? Saying, yeah, maybe 80, look at some of the infrastructure you have, going, yeah, it's 80, 100 years old, where is that, that sweet spot? And that's what we got to work with your staff too, to kind of figure out what that looks like.
Yeah. When we started looking at this, when they, when the county came to Max and brought it to the council, and we got together and said, yeah, we're going to work together, one of the, one of the things that was talked about was when the county, which abuts the city, was doing a project, we would have knowledge of that ahead of time to plan things. What are the mechanisms in place to ensure that, that we don't tear up a road and a year later, the county comes in behind us and tears up the road right next to it when we could have shifted things?
Yeah. So the county and the city will both have a five-year plan, and so we will know what the county is doing in 2025 or 2024, and the county will see our plan as well. what the county is doing in 2025 or 2024, and the county will see our plan as well, and we'll be able to detect any conflicts between the two plans, or maybe a better way to schedule two projects, maybe we move one of our projects up or back and to match what the county is doing. So it would be through comparing the five-year plans.
Okay, so it's a manual process. Is there any kind of a sign-off if, you know, one day you come in, Max, and say, I want to change everything, so this is the new plan? Does the county then get, like, advanced knowledge that the plan has changed?
So every year, during the budgeting process, we'll come up with a five-year plan, and any changes that are made through the five-year plan, we can share that information yearly with the county. And then, if we, especially if we have projects we know are coordinated, and then we're changing that, then, you know, we will be talking to them ahead of time about that.
Okay. And then, in the budgeting tool, where you had, you know, so many segments of zero, so many segments of one, and so on, if you select to do six segments, do you then get a list of all the segments that you could choose and you check them off, or how does that work?
Yeah, absolutely. So, once you rerun the application, and you, and I probably should have went into this a little bit more, but in the results here, when you can drill down, basically, on what happens per year, and you can alter and lock anything right in this application. So I'm seeing that a couple of segments of 10th Avenue are scheduled for next year. When I click on this, I can see all of the segments for 10th Avenue and what their, what the years are that they're slated into the plan, and I can make modifications right here, as well as lock them in. So there's a lot of flexibility as to, you know, how you alter the plan, how it's maintained, and where you edit it. So they all work together. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Hallerman, Donald.
Thank you, John. So I asked Max a question, maybe this has been a year or two ago, a year or two ago. I was on the Long Range Transportation Committee a little while ago, and sometimes it seems to me like we do this budgeting process a little bit backwards. You know, we're trying to figure out if we've got, you know, X number of dollars to spend on roads. Whatever might be happening with the roads seems to be irrelevant, which seems kind of backwards to me. But does this tool have any mechanism? And if I missed it, and you said this early on, I apologize, for letting us know if we are on a trajectory of some sort?
Are you talking about the road condition?
The Pacer rating, are we moving on a kind of, are we just kind of keeping up? Are we status quo? Is our Pacer rating getting better? Is it getting worse per year? And if it's getting worse, wouldn't we just have to automatically, because there must be some cost associated with the Pacer rating on any particular road going down every year? And does this tool give us any indication what that cost might be, and does it adjust for that?
So I will try to answer the part of the question, but Mike will have to answer more on the tool. So we do the Pacer rating every two years, and basically, we have a history, in general, of the average Pacer rating of the city, we know where that is. So if we're thinking of a particular road, we could look at that road and look at the history, what was it, two years ago? What was it, four years ago? What was it, six years ago? And then, see if it's declining, it's going to be declining, but is it declining at a slow rate, or is it declining quickly, is what you're saying? And if it's declining quickly, taking a nosedive, then maybe we should prioritize that road to be done earlier. So that is part, I believe, of the human component that Scott mentioned earlier. I do not know if there is anything in this tool at this time to raise that flag for us. So maybe that's, maybe a separate tool that we will have to build in an Excel table, and then look at the history and generate a flag if something is deteriorating faster than...
Right. And that's great on individual roads, but I also am more interested in this $4 million or $3 million, or, you know, whatever we decide we're going to spend on roads per year, is that enough? Is our Pacer rating at least staying level? I mean, is our Pacer rating staying level? What we really want to accomplish is maybe making our road situation a little better every year, what we want to accomplish. And if $3 million isn't doing that, or $4 million isn't doing that, then maybe we need to increase that. Because if not, it's costing us money, because as those roads degrade, they go down in the Pacer rating, it costs more and more and more as they drop for us to fix those. So we're actually going into debt by trying to, you know, stay in budget. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does make sense to me. And I know, and I made presentations to the council seven, eight years ago, we were doing mostly the roads that were higher in Pacer, so we were spending, for the type of maintenance we were doing, we were spending less money per square foot, if you want. So that will allow us, that allowed us to cover more roads. And then, we saw our Pacer rating go up because of that, because we had more roads with higher numbers. And at some point, you've done a lot of the higher roads, now you have to go to the roads with lower Pacer rating, and therefore, you're spending more per square foot, so you're doing less. And as you do that, you can see the Pacer rating slowly coming down. So I will say that...
So kicking a can down the road doesn't work.
Yes, so the past couple times, yes, we have seen the overall Pacer rating come So I guess your question behind this, I guess, is, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there enough money spent on the roads today to maintain a Pacer rating of, let's say, average of six? And I think that's a little bit what Mike was showing in the, in his demonstration, in his presentation here, is whatever we're spending today is probably not enough to do that. Now, where is that sweet spot? Obviously, I had asked him to do, what about if we do everything? And he came up with this huge number that you've seen, and he himself asked the question during the presentation, where is the sweet spot in between? So we would probably have to run a few scenarios to determine that amount, I'm assuming that, so. And then, at that point, we can come back and then answer that question with, using the tool.
I think that tool looks great for doing that, yeah, thank you.
And just to answer your question on the app, just like it adds utility age, it actually takes, that's why we should put that little graph in there, how your roads are deteriorating, we're using your data to deteriorate the roads at what they deteriorate at the City West Bend level. So your Pacer rating, so you imagine that a six won't be a six for 30 years, right? It's going to go down. So we're going to use your Pacer ratings instead of a statewide average, going, well, your six takes about this long before it becomes a five, takes about this long before it becomes a four, on the average, but then it gets, the staff's got to look at that, right? Because it's just a, it's a citywide average. So better than using the state average, right, because you're using your data, but it's still just, how do you, you know, you can't say this road goes down, you know, one Pacer rating every two years, this road's going to go down three. You've got to use an average going down, so. So yes, that's built into the program, so.
And is the cost associated with that built into it?
Well, the costs are based on if you've got inflation or not associated with that, right? If you're doing asphalt or sewer or water work.
Well, right, but the cost that, the increased cost as the Pacer rating goes down, he knows what I'm saying, yeah.
Right, no.
That might be important?
Right.
Yeah, and I don't know if the DOT has an equation for that, that could be factored in, I don't know, but...
That would be hugely important if you ask me, because if we're letting, if we're letting certain roads deteriorate and paying attention to other roads, if we don't have a cost associated with what we're, with how we're letting those deteriorate, then we're not really making informed decision.
Yeah, I think that'll be coming into the maintenance part of the tool, so how well you're maintaining your roadways and keeping them as much at a higher level, right? How long your crack filling, putting your seals on there, your slurry seals and your fog seals and that kind of stuff, to keep those roads up there, whether you're doing a complete reconstruction, or if you're just doing a nice milling overlay, right? That's where you get down to those threes and fours, and that decision's got to be made, going, is the road that bad? We got to just take off all the asphalt? Is it rutted and that bad? Or it's just a series of cracks because the pavement's 60 years old and dried out?
Sure.
So that's where you kind of got to take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jay, you had a question?
Question for Mike regarding the budget tool. When I saw you turn on $12 million for the second example, $12 million of road cost or budget, you, I thought I saw you clicked on both, back the inflation for both, is that accurate?
That is right, yes.
So that $12 million per year is way more than $12 million per year?
By the end of the 30 years, correct.
Okay. And for the $2 million example, you've just kept it flat, $2 million. What would happen to that $12 million if you kept it flat? Can you do that for us?
Sure, absolutely. So it looks like you're getting through about most of your, all of your fives and well into your sixes, and a little bit of your sevens. So, I mean, you're making good progress, but...
What does it look like at the end? Because your end showed 140 miles, is it?
Um, yeah, it's 100.7, so, yep.
Gotcha, thanks.
Sure.
So if your road's lasting, if you think about this, you got, let's just use the word 150 miles roadway, you got 140. If your roads are going to last 50 years, you should be doing about three miles a year, right? It's just kind of a big math numbers. So that's really kind of what you're shooting for, and if it costs you whatever the foot is, whatever, that's the kind of number you should be looking at if you're looking at replacing every 50 years or so on your asphalt. So, again, someone needed sooner because you had maybe heavier traffic or volumes, but in a general rule of thumb, that's where we're going to look at that, going, well, if you replace them every 40 years, 50 years, you know, just looking at a high level, going, we should be doing three miles of road a year, if we're, as the asphalt lasts 50 years at minimum. You know, that's the high-level look at it, without diving too into details.
Jay, Hallerman, Donald.
First, did your IT department, did you guys write this from scratch?
So the budgeting tool, yes. We have IT developers on staff that are really smart, and, yeah, they put this piece together. The two other applications, I was able to develop, they're based on the GIS software that the county has, that the county owns, the city owns it as well, ESRI.
Well, it's very nice.
Thank you.
And just a quick question. So this tool encompasses roads that have to have total reconstruction, as well as the, just the chip seal, repaving surfaces, is that correct? This is in...
It will. We're focusing on this part first, and kind of get your thing, and then the maintenance, as Max alluded to earlier, is coming, you know, with this as well. But this, what you've seen tonight is just the reconstruction of the roadways as well as your utilities. Yes, the maintenance stuff is coming as well. And that's more, believe it or not, unique to each municipality, how they do that, and how they allocate those funds and what they actually do on their roadways.
Anyone else have any questions? Mere.
Thanks for recognizing me, John. Well, first off, I just want to thank you guys. And this has been over a year in the making. When I first got elected, I remember we were talking about it, and I appreciate that you guys got this done at least before my term's done, so I appreciate that. Yeah, I've been looking at these numbers, I mean, just as you pointed to it, we knew about it, but we didn't know it, right? So this really helps to illustrate how, what's a nice word, how concerning maybe it is, you know, for us to make sure that we, you know, take a look at this maybe a little more seriously and really get a handle on it. And I will point that with the timing couldn't be better, we have an historic opportunity now to take advantage of things like ARPA funds, we've got the federal infrastructure bill, and I would say I'll continue to lean on the county, as I hope that this is a first step in us working together even more to gather resources to tackle this. So I appreciate it, appreciate you guys being here, and I look forward to continuing these conversations, so. Thanks, John.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on to item number three, state municipal agreements for safety improvement at three intersections along State Highway 33. Max?
Thank you. This item is for three state municipal agreements for safety improvement at three intersections along Washington Street, SDH 33. The city filled out some applications earlier this year to secure grant funding in order to improve signalized intersection. The Department of Transportation has informed us that our applications were successful through their highway safety improvement program, and the goal is to improve those three intersections, which are 18th Avenue, 7th Avenue slash Main Street, and River Road. So we have in the memo some tables to show you how the funding would work and how the schedule would work. Design and construction would be funded 90% by federal funding and 10% by the city. The real estate would be funded 100% by the state if we need to purchase right-of-way or easements to complete the project. And if there are compensable utilities and non-participating work, the city would fund that at 100%. And most of the time for this, it would be if we need to adjust the valve box or a manhole or things of that nature. As you can see, the total cost for 7th Avenue is about $1.3 million, and for 18th Avenue, $1.4, and for River Road, $1.7. And in all, the city would be spending 10% of that, and that would be a total of less than $450,000 for total project totaling $4.4 million. We provide a lot of efforts to secure this type of fundings, because we know that it helps with capital improvement project. Those are improvements that we probably would not be able to do without this funding. There is city participation, but we believe for the 10%, it's a good deal for the city, and that's why we pursue those. I broke down the funding as it was described in the state municipal agreement. I did have calls with the DOT after I had sent the memo out, so I had calls with them Thursday and again earlier today. They realized that the timing for real estate acquisition was a little too short for the project at Washington and 18, so instead of doing the construction in 2024, they are looking at potentially pushing it to 2025. So once I have a final document from them, a final schedule with all the funding, I'll provide that. Also, they explained to me that with the real estate acquisition, the city will have to upfront the cost, and then will get 100% reimbursement from the state. That is not how I read the state municipal agreement when they first came in, but I'm having those discussions with them, and again, I'll provide the information when we have finalized the SMA. So, but at this time, we recommend approving those agreements and authorizing me to sign them, as well as subsequent amendments, as long as the funding commitment for the city stays within the estimates that we have listed in those documents.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Looking for individual motions or...
Yes.
List it as one.
Motion to approve all three.
Okay, and Hallerman, Kayler, second. Okay. And Alderman Kaler, second? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, first Alderman Allen?
I'll, I'll take a second, sure.
All right. Alderman Allen first. And any questions for Max? Go ahead, Alderman.
Yeah, when you talk about the intersection at River Road and Washington, didn't we just do a traffic study? And will any changes also take into account the work that was done for QuickTrip? The, the fact that there's a second signal that's supposedly timed along with that intersection?
So there was a traffic study done for the QuickTrip development that added the signals at Shenour. And that was more for handling traffic volumes, turning movements, especially with the bigger trucks, et cetera. The study that triggered this application was more of a safety study. So we had data on crashes at those intersections. And because the flags came up with higher numbers of crashes, that's where it was looked at. And the consultant found out that we could improve safety at those intersections. For example, with providing monotubes with long arms that would allow us to put a signal above each lane. Instead of having three lanes and only two signals, sometimes people get confused which one is mine. Whereas when we have the signals above, above each lane, it's easier. We're going to improve lanes for turning movements. And also there will be improvements on pedestrian facilities. The, the curb ramps for the pedestrians will be realigned and reconstructed. Pedestrian buttons will be added. So this study is different than the other one on the fact that it was concentrating on the safety.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion on the floor for approval of all three. Do we have most, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. We have item number four, permission to advertise C-22-01, 5th Avenue Reconstruction Hawthorne to Decora.
Thank you. So this item is to reconstruct that portion of 5th Avenue from Hawthorne Drive to Decora Road. We will be replacing eight-inch vitrified clay sanitary sewer with eight-inch PVC pipes, replacing old six-inch cast iron water main with eight-inch PVC, and installing or replacing existing storm sewer. This aspect is very important because this is something that has been on our radar for decades, I believe, where we know that the capacity of the existing storm sewer is under what it should be. And we have, we have a large pipe running through 5th Avenue and we're going to replace it with two of them. So this is a big project and we're under design. We have a preliminary cost estimate of 2.1 million between the PMP funding, the water funding, and the sewer funding. And if we get favorable action by the board and council tonight, we would first add further bids in January and hopefully start construction late March through October.
All right, any, do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any questions for Max? Now, Max, I'm sure that those people on 5th Avenue in that area are gonna be real pleased to see this come and happening. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number five, permission to advertise C-22-02, Laurel Drive North Reconstruction, Sylvan to Laurel South.
Thank you. So Laurel Drive is a U-shaped road that connects at both ends to Sylvan Way. And for 2022, we're proposing to do the first half, which we call Laurel Drive North. And the second half would be done in 2023 to finish the, the loop from the end of this project to the second connection with Sylvan Way. Same thing, we will replace, replace old clay sanitary sewer with new PVC. And the old water main with eight-inch PVC water main. And replacing the existing storm sewer with reinforced concrete pipe. Obviously, we will reconstruct the road curb and gutter, do sidewalk replacement as needed. And the preliminary cost estimate is $1.3 million, including funds from the pavement maintenance program, water utility, and sewer utility. For this project, we can bid it a little later, probably end of January, because it's a project that's not gonna take as long. So we can bid it later and then have the construction end in September.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions for Max? There aren't. Alderman Allen?
Is there a reason we didn't just do all of Laurel? I mean, it just seems like you got all this stuff, just do it all at once.
So we are designing everything at once. We are designing the entire project this year. However, because of funding limitations, we had to split the project in two halves. And that's the way it has been in the five-year plan for a couple of years now. And it's, it's high on the priority list, but we couldn't do it all that same year with 5th Avenue as well. So that's why we had to split it.
And second question, the, the driver here is, is utilities are not up to snuff. And that's the reason that we're doing this? I mean, the road itself, I drove it and it's not bad. But that's up on top. It's the utilities that are forcing us to do the work, right?
Well, I wouldn't say forcing us, but if the utilities are going to dig there and instead of having them put a patch, and then if we can go in there and like Mike was explaining earlier in the presentation, they're paying for a section of the road. So if we come and pay for a portion of the road, we can have the brand new road instead of having, instead of having two patches and the road that will be, you know, when you put patches, you have a portion of the road that's new and then a portion of the road that's deteriorating. And it might affect the deterioration, deterioration rate of the new patches. So yes, we tend to follow the utilities sometimes and, and get a brand new road where we would have a patch road instead.
What, is it about, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in, but is it about 50% of the road that the utilities are paying for? Or what percentage?
So I would say about, about 50% because they have, they have the width of their trench. Usually it's 10 feet wide for each of them. So that's a total of 20. And then the road is usually 36. So PMP pays for the other portion of that.
Any other questions? Be no other questions. We have motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Max.
Thank you.
Being no further business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn.
Great. And with that, I will call to order the meeting of the Finance Committee. This evening, we have five things on the agenda. Starting out first is the approval of minutes for the Finance Committee regular meeting, December 6, 2021.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. All right, we have four items for consideration. Or, yeah, for consideration, we have the 2022 to 2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Police Protective Association. Michelle's gonna give us a little something on that.
I'll just give a summary. You already have that in your packet. But we completed bargaining with the Police Supervisors Association. We have a wage increase and actually attached the tentative agreement. So you have the actual numbers and everything. We updated some language for sick leave, actual language that they use, field training officer language, adding differential to try to encourage those that are tenured employees to work evening or late hours. We rolled longevity into base pay, kinda make that easier. We have a vision exam post-employment amount that we rolled into the base pay. And then we also introduced the alternate high deductible plan and increased premiums with this contract. We are actually finalized the contract, so we'll have that out as soon as we get through today. But otherwise, that's what I have. Any questions?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any questions for Michelle? Alderman Allen?
Yeah, when you talk about rolling the longevity into the base pay, what you're saying is your pay scales now have a rate based on longevity?
The top step does. Because right now, they get it anyway. So we just rolled it into, instead of having a separate pay rate for it. So it's already there. We just put it into the base rate instead of having a separate pay code for it. And it's only at the top step. It's not like all of them, because it's five years and above.
Okay.
Any other questions for Michelle? Otherwise, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Next up, we have the 2022 through 2024 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the City of West Bend and the West Bend Police Supervisors Association. If you wanna give us a quick highlight of that, Michelle, too.
So this one, we, we have in the contract, old contract, we had references to the records room supervisor. We don't have that position anymore. So we're basically just removing it from the contract. Obviously, wage increases for each of the years, the same language that we did for the Police Protective Association. We're also updating for the supervisors for the sick leave. We're increasing clothing allowance by a little bit. We are basically making our captains truly salary. So we're rolling the comp time into their salary because they're truly salary or exempt employee. And then again, we're also introducing the new alternate health plan and changing premiums.
Thank you, Michelle.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in a second. Any questions for Michelle? Mayor Jenkins?
Thank you. Now, a question, I just wanted to thank the, the unions again for their support and their great conversations. I had a great time. You're nodding your head, you did too? Great. But no, it was just, it was, it was just a great process. You know, we got some catch-up on salaries for those guys, concession on health insurance. It was definitely a win-win for everybody. So, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a resolution to accept donations to the Park Recs and Forestry Department. Mike's gonna walk us through some of those generous donations. Hi, Mike.
Hello. This evening, we have a very impressive list of donations that support a wide variety of park recreation activities and projects that we are looking to get started. And some of them are already in process. The first six donations support the development of the Regner Park Beach House renovation. Before I go through those, I just wanna let you know that the beach house progress is moving, the beach house project is moving along right on schedule. No major surprises or anything like that. So that's all good news there. And financially, we are obviously this evening going to celebrate some additional donations for that project. The first donation is a very impressive donation of $4,000 from the West Bend Police Department. This comes from their staff during the month of November, things like that. They have their No Shave November. If the staff want to participate in that, they are asked to donate towards a specific cause. If, for some of those staff members that may not grow facial hair, there are other incentives that they can participate in. So this is a pretty cool donation because this comes from the police department staff themselves. And they chose to support the beach house project this year. So to me, personally, professionally, I think it's really, really pretty cool that they're supporting this project. The second donation towards the beach house is of $100,000 from the West Bend Community Foundation's West Bend Mutual Insurance Company, their charitable, company charitable fund. The next three donations are beach bum donations for $1,000 each. The first one is from Kevin and Jen Wagner. The second one is from Ken and Sue Moiler. Thank you, Chief. And the third one is from Joel and Christina Angart. And the sixth donation for the beach house this evening is in the value of $500 for Joe and Mary Zarembo. So again, thank you to those individuals and organizations and staff members for your generous donations towards our beach house project. The next donation is from the We Energies Foundation of $12,500. This is for the River Walk renovation to the west side. The next donation is of, is for the value of $1,842.75. This is donated by the West Bend Historic Theater. This is proceeds from a concert benefiting the All Abilities Playground. The next very impressive donation of $7,500 was donated by the West Bend Professional Firefighters Charities. These are proceeds from their annual charity golf outing. This benefits the All Abilities Playground. Again, huge thank you to the fire department staff for choosing one of our future projects and supporting that financially. We, again, for me, it's really special. It's kind of unique to have both departments like that supporting our projects. The next donation of $1,550 was donated by various citizens in support of the All Abilities Playground Fence Picket fundraiser. The next donation of $100 was donated by a citizen in support of the All Abilities Playground. And the last donation this evening of $234 was donated by Blue Luna Yoga and Wellness for Recreation Programming. Again, thank you for all the community support from the individuals and groups and organizations and staff members. Thank you for making West Bend a vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to all those amazing people who donated to the community. Do I have a motion to accept the donations?
Motion approved.
Second.
All right. A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Lastly, we have a resolution accepting a donation from Anita King Bowes. I'm not sure if Chief wants to give a quick update or rundown on that donation.
Sure, this was a family that moved here from another community. They had police officers in their family. And she sent a note wanting to donate to the police department. And again, specifically towards community and crime prevention programming. So we're asking to move into that account.
Thank you so much. And thank you for the generous donation.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. All right, with no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn.
And hello once again. We are back into common counsel and we are on our consent agenda consisting of items seven through 15.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you. Muddell and Allen. Any questions on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, sort of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. On to number 16. We've got an ambulance invoice dispute for Michael B. I heard that he had asked for us to defer this to our January meeting. If that's okay with everybody, we could just skip over? Yep. Okay. All right, well, we'll wait for January. Encourage him to come. And for number 17, we got an appointment of election workers. I'm gonna have Alderman Butch like take this as I will be abstaining because my wife is on the list.
All right, we have an appointment of election workers.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Back to you, Mayor.
Thanks so much. And on to 18, ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 1.76, polling places of the City of West Bend Municipal Code. Those places were in your packet and we're looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motion second. Any comments, questions?
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe Stephanie covered this. Where notice is gonna go to, will, will they be mailed out to people telling them they have to vote somewhere else?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, we are going to be sending out some postcards, whether as generic as they may be, just so that people don't get misinformation.
Are we, can we also do some social media posts or something to try to keep the word going, especially with elections coming up? That'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely.
Certainly can do that.
I don't know if you heard, Alderman Kaler said it's each alderman's job to go visit your voters personally and tell them. That's how you win elections, right? All right, we have a motion second. All those in favor, sort of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 19, mayoral appointment of Peggy Fisher to the bid board. This is just a reappointment, so thanks for Peggy continuing to serve.
Second.
Thank you, Kaler and Muddell. All those in favor, sort of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number 20, resolution amending the traffic manual for the City of West Bend. Come on up.
Yeah, I just wanna make, what you have in your packet, we need to...
Yeah, I just want to make the what you have in your packet, we need to make a correction. Thanks to a, actually, it was just a test and Alderman Dolnick caught it, so. A item number three in that resolution for the stop signs on Woodford should read. The first one should be Woodford Drive at Lower Woodford Circle and Upper Woodford Circle. It's a three-way stop. Upper and Lower Woodford Circle combine there and stop or start. And then the next two should be a stop sign at Lower Woodford's or Lower Woodford Circle at Woodford Drive. And a third stop sign, Upper Woodford Circle at Woodford Drive. So the Safety Commission recommended putting a three-way stop at that location. And the vast majority of citizens there were in favor of that. It's kind of a unique intersection. And it was either that or take away a lot of parking and people didn't want to take away the parking. So that was the recommendation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you for catching that jet.
Thank you, guys. And open up for questions. Yes, sir.
The speed limit on Rusko Road, is that a change from a higher or lower speed? Or is that simply a sign?
No, it's a change. It was 45 during construction. It was reduced to 35 and based upon a recommendation from Taddy, which was a consultant which came in, recommended lowering it and feedback we had and whatever. Also, some studying that we had done on it, independent of the official one, so.
All right, thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions? Then all those in favor, sit down by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Chief. And moving on to 21, approval of the 2022 budgets for TIDS number three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15. Mark, take it away.
Good afternoon or good evening, actually. Again, TIDS three through 15, these are the annual budgets. I won't go into individuals unless you have specific questions on them. But in general, the debt on levy is now limited to two districts, 11 and 13, for a total of $328,000 and change. TID 13 should go off levy in the following year's budget because the cost that's incurring it right now disappears after 2022. Plus, we have some additional development occurring there and that value should hit the books for the 2023 year. So only TID 11 should still be forecasted for debt on levy following this. There is no borrowing plan in these draft budgets. However, if development triggers would occur specifically for TIDS 14 and 15 that are, and those triggers are basically outlined in the project plans that we approved in approving those budget or those those TIDS, then borrowing identified in those project plans would become before you specifically for specific projects. For example, in 15, if they get to a certain level, then we start doing additional work under the developer's agreement. I don't anticipate that happening within 2022, so we didn't put them into the budgets this year. Using excess increment from the donor districts, which are TIDS four and six, we're eliminating the debt on levy for TIDS five and nine. And we're also beginning to repay debt and complete projects. So TID four is pushing about $674,000 to TID five, $632,000 and change to TID nine. And TID six is almost 1.1 million to TIF nine. So the donor districts are performing very well and they are helping us out. Those TIDS five and nine are not only covering their debts and have no debt on levy, but they're also starting to repay general fund to the tune of over $341,000 for TID five, almost $500,000 for general fund and TID nine. And we're getting repaying sewer about $390,000 for TID nine as well. So the TIDS are starting to perform and pay back to the for the advances. Overall repayment, sewer is just short of 920 million or 920,000. Water utility is about 322,448. And general fund net, inclusive of any 2022 debt on levy which you approved in the previous general budgets, is about 517, almost $518,000 back to general fund. So we're going in the right direction with all the TIDS. We're using existing funds and past borrowings and increment. We've got basically four active TIDS. TID nine still has some environmental closure reporting. And the River Walk, the largest expenditure in TID nine, is about 1.1 million anticipated for the Phase Two of the of the West Bank on of the River Walk. We've got TID 12. We have environmental costs. We incurred unexpected costs last year, over $400,000 unanticipated because of tanks and contamination that was found on site that was unexpected. We have, this budget clears that over cost and anticipates the additional cost going forward for both vapor intrusion, some additional remediation and some minor closure costs as we go forward. It also starts the first year of incentive payments for both the hotel office site and also for the Trails Edge Year One incentive. We closed out all of the Forest Avenue reconstruction cost in 2021. So and we do are not proceeding with the Water Street reconstruction. So there are no additional project costs in TID 12, new costs. TID 14 is our new industrial park. Right now, this is using existing funds that we borrowed previously for the 2022 year. We're doing development incentive payments to the developer's agreement or per the developer's agreement to almost $350,000. All of that is to Milwaukee Tool. We have anticipated We Energies project costs of around $60,000 for distribution systems out in the industrial park next year. And we have design and admin costs of around $15,000 included within this. Again, if a project would occur, we've completed our contractual obligations in TID 14 for the River Road Sewer and Water that feeds Milwaukee Tool site. We've completed the four or the east-west roadway into TID 14 Forge Place. We've completed the lot grading for Phase One and we've done all this stormwater infrastructure. We're almost closed out on those those contracts. So it would take a new project, another portion of the phase to be needed in order for additional funding to be borrowed for for TID 14. And TID 15, we borrowed around a little over 1.5 million earlier in '21. And we've expended about a million dollars of that predominantly for the incentive to the developer, the upfront site remediation incentives. We, by developer's agreement, we still are obligated to do the North River Walk. And you'll see in there about a $477,000 earmark within the TID budget for that project. The only other one we've done is, and we've completed by agreement, is we relocated a small segment of sewer to make the rest of the HKS site developable. And that just got completed within the last week. So we're on track for the TID 15. And again, unless some of those development triggers would occur per the developer's agreement, we would not do additional borrowing until that occurs. So unless you have any questions, again, we've got a summary sheet that details or shows that over the whole TID districts and then individual budget sheets for each one. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer.
Thanks so much. I'll look for motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Model and Allen. Any questions for Mark? How much more time do we have to siphon funds from four and six?
Yeah, it's a it's a little less than 10 years, I believe.
Good, there's still time. Sounds great. Any other questions? Then all the favors, sit up and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
On to reports. Number 22, report by Alderman Kaler regarding the Park and Rec Commission meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. Park and Rec Commission met on 12/9. We approved a new updated urban forestry plan. Ours was pretty old. So that's been updated and approved. We approved new street tree species and removed a few species that we thought were good, that are no longer good. And we will be developing a new plot on 18th Avenue north of Park where they will, it'll be like the one that's on 18th now between Washington and Chestnut. So there'll be a new plot there that'll show you the different species. We revised the Rec Department refund policy. Approved overnight camp for Shorewood High School at Lacklirann on 6/15. That's something they do every year. They take a week-long canoe trip down the Milwaukee River and they stop at LLC and spend the night. We reviewed the third quarter Park Trust report, set our 2022 meeting dates. And Mike mentioned all of the donations that we accepted, so I won't go through those again. Our next meeting is January 27.
Sounds great. Any questions for Alderman Kaler?
Yeah, did you guys, did you guys talk at all about, we were talking about using some of the funds from the mutual mall? Maybe on the beach.
No, that has not come before us at all. That would be more a question for Jay, probably a different conversation.
I didn't know if you guys just.
No, we haven't, that hasn't come before us at all.
All right, just curious. Anything else? Then we'll move on to 23, report by Alderman Allen regarding the Downtown Bid Board.
Yeah, Bid Board met on December 7 in the council chambers. The quorum was present, so it began with a discussion of the 2021 budget to date. Then discussed the preparation of RFP for the 2022 Christmas decoration, purchasing and installations. We agreed to include a clause that will allow for a renewal of the contract for subsequent year or years. We then discussed comparison of the bid property owner and business owner surveys. Survey will allow us to provide a lens to view, to frame future projects and decisions. We then approved the facade grant committee, which will include me, Peggy Fisher, Tony Cable, Jim Ranky and Jessica Wilds. Committee will meet first in January of next year. And finally, the Bid Board accepted the resignation of Tony Cable from the board. Bid Board wishes to thank Tony for his two years of service on the board. Our next meeting is 4th of January, 2022.
Thanks so much. Any questions for Alderman Allen? Then we're on to 24, report by Alderman Dolnick or Model regarding the Plan Commission meeting.
Plan Commission meeting was, we had a fairly short agenda, nothing too interesting except for another concept proposal for the former Ready Mix Plant on Sand Drive, which had some of the same issues that the commission had had given their opinions about at at least two other meetings. And so it's it's they're going to have to come back again with something else.
Sounds great. Any other questions for Alderman Dolnick? And we'll move on to number five, our closed session item. Entertained a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85 Para 1E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is the acquisition for airport properties.
Still move, sorry. I thought you meant.
Thank you. It's been motion second, and I'll ask for a roll call. Just a second.
Alderman Butchlick?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Berquist?
Aye.
Alderman Kaler?
Aye.
Alderman Dolnick?
Aye.
Alderman Ahrens?
Aye.
Alderman Model?
Aye.
Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Thank you. So we are going to be adjourned from closed session, but I'll open up if there's any announcements for the good of the order. We'll start down here. Yep.
I have an FYI. We just were contacted from USDA Wildlife Services. They did their drone survey in the parks just recently and they got a real big surprise. They had a total of 176 deer counted in their last drone survey, which was last year we had 119. So I have no idea what is. So we are continuing to move forward with that.
Sounds like it's not working to me.
Will we be coming back or adjourning from closed session?
We will be adjourning from closed session. Yep, yep. Sounds good. And yep.
Just wanted to wish my wife and my son happy birthday today.
Ooh. Happy, happy birthday. Any other announcements this way? Otherwise, I'll wish the City of West Bend a very merry Christmas, happy holidays and a happy new year. Can't wait to see you and continue to work for you in 2022. Have a great night.